So I'll call the meeting to order and let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Will Cowler.
Mokler.
Here.
Graylob.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
One second.
Okay, some motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in, oh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard?
Wanted to get back together with you. I didn't need time on the agenda because I don't think any action needs to be taken, but I want to let you know on the car bids last week, we recall, we opened bids for a million Ford was $248 lower than Nelson Auto, which both of them less than the state contract when you take into account the, the trade-in vehicle. So I checked with both, I talked to both vendors and I'm confident both, both of the bids meet our specs. So I went ahead and ordered the cars through Vermillion Ford as the lower bid. So I, I think the issue was, I think Vermillion Ford was a little more generous on our trade and also didn't have the delivery issue that Nelson Auto did, but there were two real competitive bids. So kind of good, good problem to have there. So I just want to let you know the, kind of the end of that story. So the car is on order.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. Yes, thank you.
All right. See Rod? You've got a gravel purchase?
Morning. Yeah, we're in dire need of gravel. We've got about a couple hundred tons left. Contacted three different suppliers. But only two of them had 10,000 ton that we could access now until more crushing, which would be later next summer or midsummer. Concrete or knife river. They had a pretty decent bid for six bucks. They have the gravel on the ground now as they took over Canodals. Gravel pit at Highway forty-four and nineteen south of Parker. We've got gravel out of there before and it's a better grade of gravel than what Utica was proposing. Never got any gravel from Mr. Weeman before. It looked pretty good, but as you can see, it's quite a bit more. I realize it's closer. But it is only 10,000 ton if they don't, it's not guaranteed to be 10,000 ton. There could be less. So I don't know. We got.
Okay, I, I misinterpreted that. I thought that that was just a transport cars. I was wondering about that. So I, that makes sense. So those are three separate bids. They're Weeman one, the way it's written on there. It says 10,000 tons of gravel picked up. Right. So I, I was initially reading that as just like a very expensive delivery charge.
No, usually, usually on the bids like Knife River, when they bid, they do more bids, they'll say FOB, which means picking up at the plant, you know, and we're going to load it ourselves. So that saved a little bit. Well, we got an older loader that we just leave up there and then we can go, we have a half a day. And maybe it rains or something, then we can run. And we have two years to get the gravel out of there. So I, we quit, we're going to quit paving. So we didn't do Our Lady paving this year. Because we're about to start on the bridge down here at Dakota Street. Dumping dirt in there to try to get that shored up while we're waiting for the engineer to come up with a plan. So I was going to use the money we had budgeted for asphalt for gravel, which we are much in need of.
So it looks like Knife River is the low bidder.
Correct.
I moved to approve the low bid by Knife River. Second.
Some motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, that's not much more of a haul than my purchase is.
Well, the one, we had two choices, Fleegies, north of Fleegies, or the Utica one. And so I wouldn't take the Utica one because eighty-one's going to be tore up for probably a couple of years and that takes away our all time. We never did like that. Someone, we have to come through Yankton because that Johnson Bridge Road, as we call it, has weight limit on the bridge now, so we can't come that way.
Yeah.
Otherwise you gotta go clear back up to forty-six, which you still hardly can't get out of there. You know, to go north, it's from Utica, road on eighty-one, it's tore up. So
Yeah.
It'll be easier. I think like it'll be a wash on the time from them too.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
One question, I didn't get it to Michael yesterday. We were kind of busy with being the stuff, but is Andy still, is Andy on? I should ask him why he was here. So I don't remember what the rule, we go through this about every two years, what the rule is about moving, touching political signs in the right of way. And I'm not talking like in the ditch, I'm talking on the white line. All of a sudden they showed up on the white line. It's not a person that I can call to get a hold of. It's for an amendment or an issue on. And I mean, it's every half mile for like six miles and it's right on the white line. I mean, it's where we got to mow.
Looks like a good time to mow.
Yeah.
You would say, right?
Not with the right of way, remove it.
Not with those little wires. That hard on tractor tires, but so we did that one year and got in trouble because we ain't supposed to transport any political signs in the county vehicle. So I, can I, I don't want to just.
Debris in the right of way.
Yeah, that's what it's.
You're not putting them up.
Andy's on now too, by the way.
Andy.
He's just saying. Oh, Andy, have you been, have you heard part of this discussion? The question is what to do about political signs that are in the right of way and, you know, making it difficult to mow?
No, I hadn't heard this. Sorry. I just got back to my desk and signed on, but generally what we do if somebody makes complaints is we reach out to the candidate. We generally don't spend a lot of time trying to track down who the property owner is, but we let the candidate know there was a complaint.
And this, this is in the, in our right of way, but it's not a candidate. It's an amendment or an issue or whatever they call it that's on the ballot and they're right on the edge just about on the white line and the edge of the asphalt. That's, I, I don't have any problem with any candidates this year.
If, if they're, even the amendment ones have to have a disclaimer at the base. And I remember this because when I first ran, I didn't realize that time when I ordered signs. So I hand lettered paid for by Richard Hammond on the bottom, every sign that I put out. So at least you might be able to track down the owner of the, the owners of the signs by reading the fine print at the base. And if, and if there isn't fine print at the base, I suppose they, that might be make them open game for just taking their sign.
The ballot question, committees all filed their paperwork with the state, but if you let me know which one it is, I could probably get you a contact person.
Yeah.
So what we do until are we allowed to move them? Take them, I mean, I hate to pick them up and have to pay somebody to move them out to the fence. I don't think we should have to do that.
No, and I mean, I don't think you even know for sure that it's the property owners that placed them there.
Right. I mean, it is, is no property owner because it's the county right of way. You know, on the county road, we have the right of way.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think it, I think at this point it'd be fair, don't destroy them, but remove them. And if you need to do it today, otherwise try to get a hold of someone. In my experience, people are fairly quick at responding, at responding. So if you're able to get a hold of somebody quickly, they may just take care of it for you before you need to take care of it.
Now, I've got about six complaints on it. Besides.
With the amendment and being, you know, that committee is not in the county.
Right.
They're gonna, they're just gonna be like, well, we don't know who put them up. They're not going to send anybody else. We're gonna end up moving them in.
Yeah, you probably are. Right. Unless there's somebody that's affiliated with, that's willing to go do it locally. Absolutely.
So do we just allow Rod to remove them?
Yeah, I think if, if it's needs, if you need to mow, I mean, obviously now's, you, you have a limited window for that and you need to do your job, remove it, just don't destroy it and let them know that you have it so that they can pick up their property.
You can store it right next to the dumpster.
Are, are this row assigned? Are they close to the state, the county shop then?
No, they're.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And most of them are the small ones with the wires.
Yeah.
But this is the first time I've had people put them in field approaches out by the road or in the road ditch, but never have I ever had them right on the edge of the asphalt. Now, what I've been getting complaints about is people catch them right at the last minute at dark.
Yeah.
Swerve before they realize, because they're not reflective, realize what, you know, and they surprise them, scared them, whatever. Now, what I've been getting complaints, I looked at them.
I'd say do, do whatever is most efficient for you and your workers, but if they're, if they're causing a safety hazard, then, you know, come, come back to the shop and you could put something, put something out there that says if you're missing your sign.
I'll, I'll send you, Carrie, what it is and we'll go from there.
Do we need to?
Are you comfortable with?
Paper or anything? No, I'm sorry. I'm comfortable with that. If it's a safety issue, I mean, plus there are reasons why you need to get the, the, the right of way mode now. Pick them up, collect them. I don't think you need to put anything in the newspaper because there should be the paid for by sign. And so then you contact that, you know, whoever's on file for that. And then they're on notice at that point that those signs are in the property of the county. And if they care about them, they'll come and collect them.
Yeah, I just don't want to be accused of being against or for this amendment and taking the signs down.
No, I think, you know, something, do you think it would be smart to post anything on any of our, our sources that just remind people that that's the rule? And that if, if, you know, if you're missing a sign that was in the county right, right of way, they can go to that highway shop to pick it up or something like that. But just, just reiterating that that's, that's why, because otherwise I suspect that people might get angry at the, whoever the other side is on this issue. And you're like, oh my gosh, now they're going around the county stealing all our signs or something like that. So I would.
There's a state law already published that tells them whether to hand the county signs.
So just leave it at that.
Yes, they, they know.
Yeah.
They just chose to, just like you can't put it in the right way in city.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think it's safe to say that, you know, on both sides over the years, there have been a lot of offenses, but that thing about stealing signs, you know, I, I hate to have people believe that. You know, if what we're doing is, is, you know, taking the signs, we need to give people some kind of notice that it's us and it's why we're doing it. It's a safety issue. It's a getting work done issue. It's a legal issue. There's a statute. Yeah. I just hate to, I hate to make things any more divisive than they are already.
Yeah. Whether, when they find that their signs are missing, they should, they'll probably get a hold of us. And if they've got questions with the policy, they had to come talk to us. I'm willing to listen. And reply, maybe not as brusque as I was an issue a week ago, but not as it says, let's put it that way.
All right. But that, does that work for you, Rod?
That's fine.
You know what? I'll tell you, there is a, I found a state DOT improperly placed signs on highway right of ways, little pamphlet.
Yeah.
So if you can give me just a minute, I can read through it, make sure we're not, I mean, this is a state highway, but it's probably going to be.
It's a state statute. Only signs being right where highway signs by the county.
But there's actually a specific one for political signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
But no, every two years we go through this, but this year I haven't had a problem until they showed up.
I think, I think in two years and, you know, every election year, we should probably put something in the paper. Yes, that's a good idea. Before the signs go up.
Yeah, we, we've never done that. We do that before it starts snowing. I actually noticed DOT already has something in the paper about not pushing snow across the road, which we usually put that in there. So you know, little public notice saying that, but everybody I talked to, including myself, hardly ever read the paper, don't get it. So, you know.
I.
It is what it is.
I can share with this as the applicable state law, which I'll confirm is still valid, but it also says, again, this is a state DOT pamphlet. I don't see any, I don't see a date on it, but it looks recent. It says state workers do not make special trips to look for improperly placed signs unless there is a complaint. Such signs are often discovered as these workers perform routine highway maintenance activities, signs that cause a safety hazard such as signs in division triangles at intersections are removed immediately. Other signs may be removed or DOT may call individuals, organizations, or political parties to notify them that a sweep of signs in an area will be completed in the near future. If a sign is removed by a state employee, you may call the local DOT office to claim your sign. To achieve your sign, you will need to pick it up. Signs may no longer be available 30 days after removal. They cite to SDCL thirty-one, twenty-eight, fourteen, which says no person may erect or maintain upon any highway, any traffic or highway sign or signal bearing there on any commercial or political campaign advertising. So I think if we're following a similar procedure that's already been set up by the state, you're.
Can you forward that to me?
I sure can.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds like a, not a bad outline, maybe for a resolution or organs or something like that. Yeah, you can just adopt that and then it would all be clear there. And we'd say, you know, after 30 days, throw them away and. Yeah, absolutely. That seems really clear.
Okay. That's all I have. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Drew. We've got the first reading for request to rezone lands on Highway fifty in Burbank from Commercial One to Light Industrial.
Yeah, rezone, went to planning zoning, recommended approval and no comments or anything from the public.
Great.
I moved to approve it. Well, we moved to the second reading, right?
Correct.
I moved to, moved this to the second reading. I apologize. Yep, second.
Right. There's a motion and a second to move this to the second meeting. Any discussion?
I just noticed that the tower site across the road, that must be leased from the city, not of separate ownership.
Correct.
I, yeah, I couldn't tell you off topic.
That's the, the old Ken and Mokler property city, and he donated to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it must be, it wasn't a separate plot on your maps. So I figured, well, it must be leased.
Leased.
Yeah, but I thought at least bring it up.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. It goes forward to the second reading. Thanks.
That'd be at the end of the month then, Drew?
Uh, Gary, second reading, end of the month?
Okay.
Just so they're aware. End of the month. Got that?
All right. All right. So next item on the agenda is Michael Smith, Jody Hernandez and Andy Schultz requesting support for DOL grants.
Yeah, and I know Andy was going to be here. He said he could be here closer to nine thirty, which is why we said it there. He had a meeting that ran. So if we're, it's possible to move this a little later, I think you would appreciate.
We can do that. So we can go to, let's see. Oh, Michael Smith and Rob Marlowe on the.
Yeah, Rob.
Is that the same?
I told him to be here about nine twenty-five, nine thirty, so he should be here very soon.
All right. So we can go back when.
I'll tell you what though, what I can do is I give you a little bit, I, I've shared with you the JJR I. This is kind of part two of what Rob was coming for. This part's really just for me. So I can share that information with you now. If you look in the packet, there is it's way down at the bottom. I shared with you guys the twenty twenty-three numbers for our youth diversion.
Mm-hmm.
And I tried to find that right now.
I think it's the last page of the packet.
Perfect. So if you look at that, you'll see our numbers from twenty twenty-three, which show that what, what do we have? We had twenty-four total completers of youth diversion. Thirteen of those were successful, eleven were unsuccessful. So we're right around that sixty percent mark. If you're looking at that number compared to some other counties, you're seeing much higher success rates. Cottington County, of course, is, I think that number, I'm not, I didn't go to math school, but I think that's above ninety percent. You know, we'd like to be a much higher and efficient county at juvenile diversion programming. This last year, we've now received that check for, we had twenty-six referrals to diversion. Eighteen of those were successful. And so again, we're right at that sixty percent mark for another year. Now, what's interesting is that number, of course, ended in June, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. July one is when we had this new grant that started that Rob Marlowe is now the juvenile diversion coordinator for. I expect that our numbers are going to increase both in the percentages as well as in the actual number of kids that we're sending through diversion now. So I think we now have a couple, we have a few years of data that have shown how we've been successful. You know, the number of kids we're serving and the success rate of teen court without having the specific juvenile diversion coordinator that can do programming above and beyond just teen court. And so with that though, the eighteen successful completers, we did have, this is the first year that the state increased that number for successful juvenile diversion programming from two hundred and fifty dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars. So the county received recently a check in the amount of, it's over thirteen thousand dollars and they just had it up, but of course pulled away from it. Thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And so that money was just, is, and I, I don't think it's been received yet, but on Wednesday, so six days ago, I received an email from John Stewart from the state advising that for the successful diversion, eighteen successful completers will be receiving a check in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. So the hope is that with, with Rob on board now and the opportunities for him to be more invested with the kids at a personal level and also providing more tailor-made programming that we're going to have A, more kids through the program and B, more success with it. So with that, I would expect that future years that, that number being much higher than the thirteen five, which is the highest we've ever received. So so on that, and I wanted to share that information with you today, but then also once Rob gets here. You know, he can share kind of what he's been doing.
All right.
Welcome, Andy. Come on up.
Yeah.
All right, good timing.
Jody on?
She what? Oh, there she is.
I am. I sure am. I'm here.
Okay.
Hi.
And I would, I'll, I'll introduce. So this is Jody Hernandez. Jody is the CEO, is that correct?
Yes.
Of Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Hills. Of course, everybody knows Andy Schultz as well, who's, he's present on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club as well. There's a grant opportunity. That information's also been shared. And I just asked that they would show up here today to provide information as it relates to this grant opportunity. I'm a big proponent of it. I've spoken with Annie Brokenleg, who does the JDAI programming, grant programming. That's what Rob currently is, is filling that role for the three-year state programming. This opportunity really melts well with, with what we're doing right now with Rob, because we already have him here. So I'll let, I'll let Andy and, and Jody really share the details of it, but I felt like it was important to get it in front of the commission. I think I could have just said, yep, I'm a proponent. Go ahead, let's do it. But I felt like it was important to have this information shared with the five of you as well before I say absolutely, let's pursue it. So with that, I'll yield my time.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll just say thanks for letting us, you know, bring this forward, forward today. Really just another layer of the Boys and Girls Club of, of the Northern Plains to offer programming to a very broad, you know, a very broad oh, demographic, just all ages, all in, in various in various situations. And this is, and this is just another one. And by, by being able to go out and get grant money to, to help fund some of this is, is important. So again, Andy Schultz, local advisory council member as well as corporate board member for the Northern Plains. And otherwise I'll let Jody do most of the talking today.
Great. Jody.
Hi, thank you. I, I'm actually pretty excited to be in front of you all today. I, I know we've had lots of opportunities to come and talk and be in front of you. And every time I'm either traveling with business out of state or I'm pulled somewhere else. So I'm, I'm glad I can be in front of you, even if it's just virtual today, but I finally get to meet you virtually, which is great. Um, so this is actually, this goes right in line with what Michael was just talking about, which is perfect on piggybacking on what he was talking about with Rob's work. And just being able to do the more, the more specialized offering to our individuals, especially in our diversion and teen court program, and just be able to take our work the next step forward. So this is actually a grant, it's a federal grant. It's from the Department of Labor and it's a growth and opportunity grant. Um, this grant's goals are actually, so I'm just going to read you a little bit because it's a massive grant. We don't have all the details figured out yet. And so instead of just like hosing you down with a whole bunch of information, I'm just going to read a little bit just to kind of give you an overarching view of what, what it's about. So it's really to help youth age fifteen to eighteen to increase their conflict resolution skills and develop strategies to prevent and avoid violence. It introduces and prepares the youth for the world of work and it helps youth identify career interest as well as attain relevant skills and gain work experience. It provides the youth income to work as well as starts them on a path of earning a living wage to attaining high school or high quality jobs and careers. So upon graduation, they'll either have a college readiness plan or workforce readiness plan in hand. This has several partners that are required in this grant. We've already worked closely with Dr. Alvy from the school district. Chief Brady Crystal, she's working with us from the police department as well as Dr. Peterson from S, from USD, sorry, wrong university for a second, from USD, working with us from the Violence Prevention and Intervention Peace Partner. So really what we're looking at is individuals, like I said, between fifteen and eighteen, so residing in our target area. So right now this target area we're talking about is Clay County. They, they've had to have several different criteria to make them qualify, which one could be expulsion from school, have some kind of interaction with the juvenile justice system. And that's a really broad term in this grant, because since this is a federal grant and written for all the states, it's very broad. So that means they could be involved in the diversion program and the teen court program. They could have had interaction with their SRO at school. Have truancy issue. They couldn't have all kinds of things. They could actually be, have a parole issue. And in some cases actually be part of an incarceration or arrest situation. And then also have some additional risk factors, which could be a juvenile criminal record. Attend some kind of alternative high school or have some kind of disciplinary situation. Left high school before completion. Could have some gang affiliation, parent who is currently or formerly incarcerated, diagnosed with having ADHD, ADD, being on IEP. Assessed with some kind of antisocial or mental health piece or having some kind of substance abuse issue. The grant is a two million dollar grant. It's actually, if awarded, we'll know in February. And then once we know in February, we'll have until August to actually hammer out the details. It's actually, if awarded, we'll know in February, and then once we know in February, we'll have until August to actually hammer out the details. And um get our MOUs in line and get everything ready to go, and then we'll have two years to run the grant. It's approximately a hundred and fifty youths, spending about thirteen thousand per youth. And af- after I just explained to you the population pool. Twenty-five percent of the youth in the program do not have to meet any of that criteria. So after we create the program, twenty-five percent of the youth can be any youth. In the area that just say, I want to be part of this workforce readiness program. And um, so the the really great highlights of this program. And I like, there's a couple really, actually. When we look at our, when we look at you to put them into this program, so I'm a firm believer, whenever we have a kiddo in a program, let's say like our diversion program. They go through our hundred and twenty hours of program. And it's done, I'm the firm believer in saying, okay, what do we hand that kiddo next, what do we put in their hand next for the next experience with us? Because we just don't want to cut them off and send them on their way, if we keep them involved, we know we're gonna have those higher recidivism rates, we're gonna keep them involved longer. And we know there're gonna be less chance that they're going to come back to us through the system. So what's that that we put them in in their hand, and this is one of those programs that we can put in their hand and say, gosh, you went through this program, we did a great job, now let's work on the next step. And um, and so with this program, we are able to not only pay the youth to be in the program, but we're also able thirty-five. Percent of the funds can go to pay the employer, which is fabulous. So you don't see a lot of that with these type of grants, but. If we are able to make that connection, if they want to go and do just site visits to start building a resume or actually do work. We can pay the the employer the salary for that youth, which is really great. Um, as well as on top of that, um. We can really look at. Once we get this grant, this has nothing to do with COVID funds, this has nothing to do, this is sustainable funds, this is around five of this grant. So this grant has been pretty sustainable. But I'm also a very big proponent of, once we start to get grant funds, we do not live on grant funds. So to put a sustainability plan in place, because there's nothing worse than when you get a great program in place and it's running. And you're serving people in our community, and then all of a sudden we have to say, we can't do this anymore, because we don't have the funds. So there's nothing worse than doing that to our 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 kiddos, to our families, to our communities. So this grant allows us time to put a sustainability plan in place, so that we, once we get the program up and running, then we can continue at that point. To fund it moving forward. And then the other piece that I was gonna say, like many of our programs, this has a heavy intervention piece. But played into it with, like I mentioned, with the conflict resolution and such. So we're able to work with, at the beginning of the program, through our assessments, just like we do with diversion and teen court. We're able to do an assessment and able to look at, is there any barriers for this kiddo that's keeping them to be successful, so. Do we need to work on any kind of behavior management, substance abuse, continue that piece, mental health? And we can pay those providers or contract out with those providers to get that kiddo and those families, those services they need. So that they can be successful in this program. Without having to hurdle over those barriers. So that is this program in a nutshell, so what we were actually asking from the state's attorney at this point is just a commitment to the program. If we get the funding and that a commitment that um referring. Kiddos that are appropriate to the program, to the program. Um, as well as just working with our partners, especially the prevention and intervention partners. Um, as well as um with prop- with proper um. Consent, um supplying any kind of. Documentation needed from the the participants or their families, so that's really all we're asking for right now. Any questions for me?
Yeah, and I think uh and and if I, as I remember, or as I recall, Jody, there's a couple other counties that are already on board with this program.
Oh, yeah.
Also being served by the the St. Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Hills, is it Brookings County I know is one of them, but there's at least one other, is that right?
Yes, Moody County as well.
Okay, and so the whole intention, as I understand it, is to take these youth that fit this criteria, find partners in the community, employer partners in the community, and start. Getting these kids into an employment opportunity um that can serve the kids, both on a resume and also for them to see some real-life experience when they're fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, as they're. Trying to build a resume and get prepared to go out in the future. Um, and that's, you know, the grant funding would support theoretically, you know, multiple counties and multiple employers um as, you know, these kids try to get. A step up into adulthood, I guess, if you would.
Yeah.
Our our program then would be mainly geared to that lower age demographic that's listed in the. Uh, in the soft or the the description of the grant program here, it wouldn't necessarily be to the eighteen to twenty-four, sir.
No.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Yeah, fifteen to eighteen right now. Not not saying, once we receive this grant. So kind of like the sky's the limit, right, so once we receive the, if, because being very positive, right, so once we receive this grant, it opens the door to several other grants. I will tell you, Boys and Girls um on the national level is pushing to serve membership. The current, right now, we currently serve eighteen, they are pushing to serve membership now to the age of twenty-two, because they are finding that. Several individuals are graduating from, young adults are graduating from high school, and they're not prepared for for life, they're not prepared for, do not have a college plan in place and do not have a workforce readiness plan in place. And they're just struggling, and so. They are running some of those plans across the country of. Um, Boys and Girls Club really working with those youth, trying to help them get a workforce readiness plan in place, that is a strong. Um. Proponent in the national strategic plan as well as ours of that workforce readiness piece. Now then, Vermillion, that we now have our own home, our own club. It opens the floodgate to everything that we could possibly do there in Vermillion and help the community with. So when I kind of say, you know, um. We could, we could do about anything, we can plan anything moving forward. And if that's a need that we see that's in the community, that's something we can always work on in the future, most definitely. Is working with that as well. The one thing too, the positive point with employers is, you know, we're helping employers, you know, build a quality, their quality workforce as well. And that's what's really important, I think, with this piece too, not just helping the. The kiddos build a strong resume and getting references and find out, you know, really what they're interested in and what they want to do, but also helping employers start to build their workforce.
So what you're really asking us is to, uh, let's see, you you're the grantee. Yes, you're the grantee, Boys and Girls Club is the grantee, and you're asking us to be partners. Is that?
Yes. And then, so when we're rewarded the money. When we, in February, we'll sit down as a group and we'll say, okay, what do we need in Clay County to make this happen? We 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 have just already preliminary added in the grant that we would need. Another staff body in Clay County to help. To do this piece, we've, you know, also need money for the um employers to help. For paying the youth, but you know, we maybe we see we need some other staff to help. Rob or help um on the diversion side, we might, you know, I don't know what we'll need necessarily when we start actually digging in. But we'll look and we'll, we could sub-grant money, we can do a lot of different things at that point.
Great, um, so uh, do you need a formal vote from us or just a consensus? Um, or do you need anything signed for the grant, that would be the question?
I think at this point, I, she sent me a letter, and then right now they've been going around to state's attorneys, getting the state's attorney's signature on just a letter of support. So my intention was to bring this to you guys mostly as an informative piece with the hope that after I sign off on a letter of support. That when MOU will be coming in the next few months, um, but if there's anything beyond that, I would certainly defer to Jody on that.
I I think that would be great, I mean. I I think it would hurt, I mean, I think it would look great in there that if the county can. Commission would. I don't know how we would do that, Mike, but if we could get something made from the county commission saying that they were in great support.
We could do. Yeah, we could do a resolution of support.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that would look fabulous in the grant, I think that would help a lot, actually.
Whereas is about how this is so needed in our community, how beneficial it would be on all these different fronts, workforce development, better outcomes for our youth. Um, you know, the poverty challenges we face in our county, things like that, so I think I think it'd be. Easy to put together a strong case and a resolution for why this is really needed here.
Yeah, and and when would you need the resolution by?
Uh, Friday.
All right, so we we need to do a resolution now.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's the greatest Tuesday. Monday.
Yeah, so along the lines that Jeffrey suggested. Um, would somebody like to make a? Uh, let's see, a motion?
Okay, did you get those three, whereas?
Yeah.
I remember them, they are, they are on our recording, but uh.
Yes.
Yes, so whereas those reasons that I provided previously, um, we resolved that uh we support this grant application uh. And feel that it'd be very beneficial to our county as a whole, and particularly to the youth that it conserve.
Sounds perfect, is that, is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I I moved to uh pass that resolution. Which will be rebuilt from the recording.
It was good.
Uh, that that anybody heard here that would, they'd like to add or subtract from that.
I I think especially getting that poverty rate in there. Uh, would be important, because that's a a rather startling rate for a county that. In our geographical region, um, so uh, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, I don't know, Carrie, if you can. Yeah, and then, and then you, you just let me know and I'll pop over to the courthouse and sign it.
Put that number in for me, pretty rate is currently, I think it's something around like twenty, twenty-six or something, but. Yeah, I, that was, I think that's the most recent number I've heard, but it was thirty-four, yes, I think it is in the twenties, yeah, last day.
Good, all right, thanks all.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
Thank you so very much, everybody.
Thank you for your work, yep, we really appreciate having Boys and Girls Club in the community and uh and are looking forward to all the wonderful things it's gonna continue to do, so, thank you.
Thank you, and you know we'll be back again for the Community Block Grant. So be watching for us.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and then we've got Rob Marlowe here.
Boys and Girls Club Day, yeah. Please take a seat.
Oh, real quick, before I get started, Michael wanted me to talk about our trips to the Northern Hills and also to Pennington County and Watertown, but before I get into that, I would like to introduce our new unit director, Rachel Franks. She just got the job yesterday, and I wanted to introduce her.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, yes, my name is Rachel Franks, I've been with the Boys and Girls Club of Vermillion for two years now, serving as the education director. Um, implementing our tutor club programs over the last two years for um elementary through high school students. And uh I'm really excited to make the transition into unit director. Um, so we'll be, I'm sure, starting our search for a new education director here shortly, um, but I'm really excited, really excited to be here as well, thanks, Rob.
So yeah, I I'll just do a quick overview of our trips, and if anyone has any questions, please reach out or just shout out. Uh, so on the twenty-third of September, we went to Northern Hills Diversion, that's located up at Deadwood Lead. Uh, they've been doing diversion in teen court since the nineties, and we met with the three ladies that operate out of there. And we learned some of the ins and outs and all the different programs and curricula that they use in their program. What's really, really great about their program is they have a ninety-two percent completion rate, so if we can emulate some of their. Performance, then definitely we can make our our uh. Our teen court a lot better, I also was had the option, I also had the um opportunity to sit in on their teen court. And they, their teen court blew me out of the way, they had kids actually doing opening statements for their, for their teen courts, and they had to do a closing statement, so. If anything, we can emulate from their teen court and bring it down here, we'll make our teen court better, and it'll get more kids involved in the justice system and get them more excited. Talking about workforce readiness, maybe to be a lawyer someday, so yeah. That trip was really, really great, we uh, I'm still in contact with uh Lexie and Verla, all those, all the ladies up there, and they send me. Information and they give me advice whenever I need it, uh, that was a great trip. Uh, then the next day, the twenty-fourth, we went to Pennington County diversion, they do diversion with the county itself, so they operate out of the state's attorney's office. And we met with Kim Morsching, who is the director of diversion out there. Uh, we learned a lot about different programs and classes, but that trip, on that day, we actually talked a lot about truancy. Because truancy was a big issue for them up in Pennington County and Rapid City, and just like everywhere else in the state, truancy is an issue. So uh, they seem to be doing a pretty good job at uh tackling truancy, they have this idea of like, there's many different ways up the mountain. We don't all have to go through public education to get a good education, we don't all have to go to college to get a good education, get a good job. So they told us a lot about different um. Alternative schooling options around the state, for example, up in Chester, they have a completely online school. Uh, that's a school district for the state of South Dakota, they originally started as a way to teach Hutterite kids. Uh, after, you know, they get out of school at eighth grade, and it was completely online, and they even offer an in-person school up there, Chester. So a lot of great education options for our kids if they can't go to the Vermillion Public School for for some sort of reason. Uh, then later on that week, we went to Watertown, we went up to the Watertown Boys and Girls Club up there, and we went up Louis Canfield, he's the diversion director, he's been. He's been in charge of diversion up there for about three years, and we sat in on their quarterly J D A I meeting. Uh, Justice Detention Altern- Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, that's what J D A I stands for, in case you don't know. And what's great, we learned, we really learned about the new program of conditional lease that we're gonna be. Conditional release that we're gonna be starting here eventually in the county. And what's really, what's something that I really thought was interesting uh at Watertown is they do what's called a diversion assessment. Which is where they sit down with the diversion director and someone from the state's attorney's office, and they talk to the kid who. Maybe they were on diversion or teen court before, but they recently broke the law again, we sit down with them and we ask them, why should we give you another chance to diversion? Puts the kid back on the spot and really makes them think about like, do I deserve a second chance? Um. We also talked about, they also had this a crazy thing up in Wat- uh Watertown that I, maybe next year for the school year, we should definitely look into it. Since they were dealing with a lot of truancy up in Watertown, they had the state's attorney send a letter to every single parent of the school district up in Watertown. Explaining the charge of truancy, the South Dakota codify law, and the consequences of what would happen if truancy uh if truancy continued. Um, according to the diversion guys up there, they've been doing, that letter was very successful in getting a lot of kids back to school. Uh, it seemed like just maybe parents didn't really know that there was a codify law about truancy in South Dakota, and it really just, you know. Give them all the information, so there's no excuse for for not going to school. Uh, then on the thirtieth of September, we went up to Sioux Falls and we toured the Juvenile Detention Center, and we toured Lutheran uh Lutheran Social Services, their RISE Center. Uh. So when we went up to Juvenile Detention Center, it was an eye-opener for me, I've never been up there, never even turned it, uh tore it, and it really showed us why diversion was important for our kids. Our kids down here in Clay County are not committing the same crime, uh at least at the same level as the kids up in Minnehaha County. They deal a lot with aggravated assaults and a lot with meth charges up there in South, in Sioux Falls. So if we can prevent our kids from going up to J D C, experiencing those harder criminals and seeing that like, not criminals, more. Harder crime statistics up there, maybe we can can uh prevent them from even going deeper into the system. And then we toured a RISE, which is a unlocked facility where they can send kids up there. Um, what's really cool about the RISE is like, they, it's more of a social and mental health kind of station uh where kids can talk about their problems and go through different things. There is, there is a problem every so often with uh some some of the students leaving our eyes without uh. Without the permission of the staff, so it really just showed us that we, that diversion's really important, and we want to try to keep our kids in our community. Because as soon as they get up to either RISE or J D C, the risk of them re-offending skyrockets. So that trip was very, very refreshing and eye-opening. Um, those are the three trips that we took this past, oh, four trips that we took this past week and a half, does anybody have any questions for me about the trips?
Sounds like you learned a lot.
We learned a lot.
That's fantastic. Um, what what would your sort of priority program be, your next priority program be?
Absolutely, so first thing we're gonna do is we uh, I've just, I took a lot of from the ideas from the uh Northern Hills diversion, and we have revamped the program for teen court. And I'd be happy to give you guys those documents, for example, we found a lot more free online classes for kids to take, for example, there are classes from, has anyone ever heard of Third Millennium? Okay, Third Millennium is a intervention class that they can do online, it would be charged like seventy-five bucks per kids, but the Boys and Girls Club would assume that that uh. That cost for the student, and then they just log on, and there's, there's thirty classes ranging from vaping uses all the way to conflict resolution, all sorts of things. Um, along with that, we have just, I just got the approval from Mr. Mr. Boyle and Mr. Fry at the middle school and high school. That I can actually start meeting with the kids at school, that was a big barrier for a lot of the kids, they couldn't get to the club for. They couldn't get to the club for so ever, whatever reason, so now I'm actually gonna go to the school and meet them there. And it's a good way to make sure that they're attending school too. So uh, that was the first priority. The second priority is I'm working with Annie Broken Lake, our State JD AI Coordinator. And we are getting our case management diversion uh court approved by uh Judge Garing over in Yankton and that's the other um priority. And then the third priority that we have is opening up the teen center at the Boys and Girls Club, so that the teens here in the community have a safe place to go after school to hang out rather than walking around school or going to the library. So yeah.
The library, li- library patrons will be very grateful.
So yeah, those are our, those are our three big priorities, I would say.
And, and my office joined Rob along with all four of those site visits and was really enlightening to us as well. Um so now kind of from my perspective, how we're handling uh juvenile cases that are coming in is both Caitlin and I uh are both reviewing those cases for potential diversion opportunities, including up through case management. Uh and then I'm kind of the, at this point, I'm the, I'm kind of spearheading it from my offices and uh some of the advice we received that have the juvenile prosecutor be someone that's different than the, the State's Attorney's Office's diversion person, if you would, and so I'm assuming the role of the diversion um and the gatekeeper in the office and then Caitlin is still gonna continue to prosecute any cases um or act as the prosecutor in cases that are adjudicated in, in juvenile court, cause that still serves a purpose um as well, of course, in some cases and situations. Um so Rob and I have been, him and I work hand in hand. We've been doing weekly meetings and just assessing where the kids are at and, and new cases that come in. So I've appreciated immensely the partnership and the, the work that Rob's put in cause it's um building this is really, even though there's there's molds out there, you know, we're, we're not reinventing the wheel, but you still have to implement it um and find ways that work well for our community and some of the challenges that we have and some of those challenges include like mental health um evaluations and getting those type of services, substance abuse um for juveniles, you know, even Yankton has a lot more um resources than we do and, you know, even though it's a thirty-minute commute, that's a thirty-minute commute and so you know, we each community kind of struggles with their own, um you know, each has something that's gonna be um, you know, a problem child, if you would. And I think that's probably our biggest one right now is, is mental health and um serving kids as well as substance use disorders and serving kids in that arena. Uh but Rob's been great at figuring out programming, some of this online work that, that we can do, so if we don't have those resources available in person, he's finding that like Third Millennium and other resources that can fill that gap. Maybe it's not quite as perfect, but it's a lot better than, than nothing. So really appreciate you, Rob, and appreciate the work you've done. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. That means a lot to me. And I'll also, I'll also mention that we have a partnership with Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health. They, every time we do an intake with a teen, be, be it teen court or case management, they sit down with us and they do a behavioral and a um mental health assessment for the child and then they recommend services based on that assessment. So substance abuse, we have them do substance abuse treatment, um moral reconstruction therapy, which is MRT, we have them do that if that applies and those are all requirements for diversion. They have to complete those to complete diversion as well. So we're definitely serving mental health and substance abuse as well. Uh real quick, I'll just tell you, we have six kids currently on the caseload. We have four at the middle school here and two at the high school. Five of them are inside Vermillion and then one is outside of Vermillion in the country. Any other questions that I can answer or any questions for Rachel?
Yeah.
Um, one, one question from the beginning, I was just curious, I'm not super familiar with organizational structure, so unit director is, is, is what? What, 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 what is that role primarily?
So that is just overseeing all programming and staff for the Vermillion unit?
For the Vermillion unit, so, so Boys and Girls Club Vermillion, you're the head of that now. Okay, I appreciate you putting that for me. And I was curious about where's the teen, uh teen center gonna be located? Will that be at the same?
It's gonna be at the Austin Elementary School. Uh I'm not sure if you're all familiar with Austin, but the old library, that's gonna be the one big teen room and then we're gonna have a separate room for the teens. That was also, uh I actually have an office connected to that library that leads to the door outside of, uh outside of the club. So any diversion kids that come for a meeting with me, they just come through that door and we keep their privacy intact that way too.
That'd be nice.
So yeah, that's really nice.
Great.
Yeah, and if you would like to come and tour the club, I'd be even more than happy to have you there.
Yeah, absolutely. It's great.
Yeah, it's really, really exciting. Programs like this make a difference on the other end and uh we hope to see our um, our jail population decrease over time.
And the ones that we sentenced balls to.
Oh.
Exactly.
Yeah, what, what, what is the cost of that now? It's five?
Actually, actually last month, we spent ninety-six hundred and ninety-eight dollars sixty-four cents
Wow.
on four patients up there. I consider them patients, not.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, and there was, there was a discrepancy that I saw among the, it was, it looks like a per day cost at four fifty-eight uh forty-eight cents.
Well, and I think I just heard that it's going up to four and down.
Yes, and it's quite a, quite an expense actually for the county, you know, if, if uh that's for August, that's just the August costs and if we went that up, to that on an annual basis, it's a hundred and twenty K per, per year, which is better spent on your program.
Hundred percent, and also with the new uh incentive from the state, the seven hundred and fifty dollar for completed diversion case, it definitely gives us, not only is it the right thing to do, but it's also makes a lot of financial sense as well.
Yes, exactly. That's why I wanted to bring it up, is that there are those in the audience that uh, uh that not in this audience here, but out on, online and our, that will be seeing our Zoom that uh may go, why would we spend money on something like this? And I pointed this out yesterday, I did an Ollie class yesterday on county government and one of the things I emphasized was your program and some other programs uh like uh Lewis and Clark Behavior Health that are really in the realm of paying me now or paying me a lot more later.
Yeah, no kidding.
And so those things are, are very important to us, I think. It's a county, it's a community here and uh place where we can really do some good.
Absolutely.
Rob, would you share just a little bit on what, cause we haven't implemented conditional release yet, but can you share what that kind of looks like from your perspective?
Absolutely. So a conditional release, let's say a kid is arrested for any sorts of, any sort of thing. Uh a ray, a risk assessment instrument will be performed and let's say they score enough for detention up at JDC or RISE. Instead of going up to there, as long as there is a guardian at home that is able to take custody of that child, the judge can uh can decide to give the child conditional release, saying that we will conditionally release you to the custody of your parents as long as you follow these certain requirements. Those requirements could be like, you're not gonna leave the house except for attending school and attending court and maybe even a job. Uh you have to check in with Rob at the Boys and Girls Club so many times in a week. You have to call Rob or anything like that, just so to make sure that we are, you know, have a there, it's more of community supervision on my end rather than having like a traditional probation officer or something like that. And we would watch these kids uh while they're, so they'd be released conditionally until their court date next. So I'd make sure that they are staying uh, staying in the community, not running or anything like that, or they're still making, uh still fitting the conditions that the judge is setting them. And then when that forty-eight hour conditional release, not conditional release, excuse me, custody hearing happens, then we have that uh custody hearing with the judge and the judge can either continue with the conditional release or send the kid up to a RISE or a JDC. Yes.
And, and uh is that a program that we currently have or that isn't developed?
We are actually developing that. So uh the Boys and Girls Club and the State's Attorney Office, uh over the past summer, we applied for a JD AI grant through the Annie Casey Foundation. And uh that started July one and now we are actually gonna have a training here with law enforcement coming up this month sometime. And then.
Yep, so the intention is Annie Broken Lake will come in and train law enforcement a couple of different times in the next month or two uh on what this program looks like, so they're off, they're the ones that are taking kids up to, to JDC. Right, they're the ones dealing with an incident happening in the middle of the night um or during the day, whatever it is. Um and then they're contacting JDC, doing this ray, this risk assessment, uh and then if they score for detention on the ray, that's when they have traditionally been being taken up to JDC or RISE. Um and so this is an opportunity, we need to have law enforcement knowledgeable on what this process is. Or instead, in some sort of situations, it won't be for every kid. I know Yankton implemented this a couple of years ago and I think they, on average, they use it less than ten times a year. Um but you know, even if we're serving a couple of youth, one, two, three a year, it's gonna be better for them. It's also gonna save the county money. Um and then it's gonna put, you know, really the, the big responsibility is gonna be while they're out rather than being what traditionally happens is if they get put in placement, they have the absolute right to a hearing within forty-eight hours. And so a judge at that forty-eight hour hearing, if they are taken up to JDC or RISE, may at that point release them or may continue the case out for a week or two while we figure out, you know, guardians or situations or what's going on next. This is an opportunity in the right situation where the parent or guardian is available and the allegation isn't so serious enough that we couldn't allow this child back into the community. And we put him back, him or he or she back into the community, Rob is really gonna be the one that has the bigger responsibility outside the parent or guardian on ensuring the kid is doing what he or she is supposed to be doing. They still have, the judge is still gonna hold this hearing within forty-eight hours, but instead of it being with that kid being placed at JDC, they're gonna come in with their parent or guardian, Rob's gonna be there. They're gonna be back in the community and the judge is gonna say, you've been conditionally released for the last day and a half. Now I'm gonna continue that, or maybe you've done so poorly for the last day and a half that we have no choice but to place you. Um and so it's not being utilized a lot in smaller counties, but I do absolutely think that with the right training and oper- there will, those opportunities will arise and it's gonna save money for the county. It's also gonna not put that child into JDC, um you know, which was talked about so heavily about, of course, that being bad for their mental health and all sorts of different reasons. Um Yankton utilizes and I think other counties utilize like, in some situations, like an ankle monitor too, in a way to monitor that child to make sure. So it's a least restrictive, right, rather than placing them in JDC or at a RISE, potentially you put an ankle monitor and only wants to do that to a child, but of course it's a much better outcome than placing them um at a detention center. Uh and so there's resources and ways to implement this that'll hopefully be successful. Uh and you know, every different facet from benefit for society, benefit for the child, benefit for the county's pocketbook, so. Um so in the, the assessment is performed by law enforcement like at the scene? So they, they call up to JDC and uh, and there's someone there, an intake at JDC will ask the questions.
Okay.
And that will then score.
Okay.
The, the child, based off of the questions and then where, where they fall in numerically is gonna make that firsthand, that will make the first decision. So there really isn't a lot of, as I understand it, discretion in, in what happens on the front side, they call up or they bring the child up and they do the RAI scoring, they ask the questions, they figure out this child, this child's previous interactions with law enforcement. If they've ran, if they've, if they've had other cases in the past, some of it has to do with like you know, their parent's situation and, and their home life. They get a score assessed to them and then wherever they score at is gonna be what happens to that child that night, until that forty-eight hour hearing occurs where the judge can make a, a better finding.
How, how successful is it at, at actually keeping kids out of JDC of the counties that are using it?
Yeah, from what I've been told from Annie Broken Lake, she said it's been extraordinarily successful so long as it's implemented correctly.
So bo- most of the kids that, that get the diversion, right?
Yeah, the conditional release.
The conditional release. So most of the kids that get conditional release then do not end up in JDC related to that infection.
Correct, okay, that's it. And so then that's at the, you know, Rob here will be doing that work for us to ensure that that child is staying um, you know, in line, if you would, for the duration of when they otherwise would have been in placement. Uh and then, you know, utilizing resources potentially like that ankle monitor would be another way to ensure that that's done. Um and yeah, Annie said that from my, my recollection from that conversation was that it's been overwhelmingly successful.
Yeah, like in Yankton, for example, like, like Michael said, they only use like ten times a year, but with those cases, like those kids, they stay in the community, they're not at risk of reoffending as they get further into the system, it's just better for the kids regardless.
Yeah, and I think the last thing that's probably important to add to that too is there's been there are foster parents now in the state that has, their entire role is to take in a child on this conditional release who doesn't have a parent or guardian to go back to. Um Yankton is working on certifying some um, on a, a family who can fill that, that role in Yankton County and our hope is that we would be able to partner with them and if they weren't serving, if that foster family wasn't serving a youth and we had one that came up and needed that same placement and a parent or guardian wasn't available, that perhaps we could piggyback and utilize that foster family as well. Um so that's a newer, my understanding is that's a newer um program that the state's kind of implementing as well and that's been really successful because oftentimes when these kids are in a situation where they're scoring for placement, the bigger bear, the biggest barrier is not having a guardian to return them to. And that in itself is uh the, you know, that, that's the end-all, you know, if they don't have that.
I don't know, know what the process is for trying to identify someone that might be able to fill that role in our community, but that would be incredibly valuable. Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And uh that's, the cour- court resource home is another great example for like if the victim is in the home, for example, and they just can't stay at the home because the victim is there too, like that could be a great option. Sometimes kids just need to get away from their, their family just to cool down, cool down a little bit. That'd be a great option for the court resource home too.
Right.
Is the, during this interview with the person up at JDC, whether they go there or go into diversion, is the uh subject or the patient aware of that uh matrix and how they, how they scored?
I, I'm not sure, I don't know, I think it's law enforcement that does the interview with, and so I'm not sure how it looks, I'm not sure how it's implemented. I just know that law enforcement is having the interaction with the intake officer, so I'm not sure. I assume based off of what that looks like, some of those questions may require the officer to ask the child yeah, for an answer, but a lot of them are gonna be known uh based off of the, there's a system that keeps all of the juvenile, um the juveniles' past interactions with law enforcement and court proceedings. And so a lot of it isn't even an interview process with the child, it's looking at the past um, you know, failures to appear, the previous twelve months worth of what they've been, you know, crimes that they've alleged to have, have done. And so a lot of it's being scored based off of that rather than like a, a traditional interview.
Yeah, well, the reason for it is, the, my question is, is that, you know, I'm kind of a big believer in this raising kids with natural consequences, you know, having them aware that uh, oh yeah, I don't, I guess I don't remember that that did that three weeks ago and you know about it. And uh, having them aware of that scoring system uh can be making them better aware of how they got to where they're at.
Yeah.
And how they can move on beyond that with better behavior.
For sure.
And uh all, the other question I had was, was that you're gonna have several contacts with the per week of folks that are in the JDC.
That would depend on um, that depends on the severity of the crime and that would be a condition set up by the judge. I was just using that example, but um, yes, like for example, like I don't, excuse the terminology, but let's say if a kid is a, a flight risk or anything like that, um then the judge may require them to check in multiple times when they're at the club, but in most cases, from what I understand, like in Yankton, they only really meet once a week, in most cases.
Do you uh do you uh, uh, th- those contacts, are they more by text message or by phone call?
It's more in-person actually in Yankton, what they do. They do in-person meetings with, uh normally it's at the school if the kid is allowed to be able to act, uh if the kid is allowed to attend school and they meet them at school, so.
There again, my own opinion is, is that uh, that it's better to visit with someone in person.
Oh.
You get that, that.
Hands down.
Flow.
Absolutely.
Uh second with best would be a phone conversation and way down on the list to me is the text message, which is
Oh, I agree.
Which is the, the preferred method of communication for kids of that age.
Well, I mean, that's an, that's another thing too. I mean, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we're teaching the kids social skills and having conversation with someone in person is definitely a social skill that we need to learn. And like you said, it's a hundred percent way better for me to like, get the feeling of how the kid is doing in their day just by actually talking to them in person. So yeah, that's what we, that's what we tried to do in some cases, like I had a kid last week that missed a check-in because their parent was, didn't have a car for some reason, so it's also like, we can let's meet over the phone and at least we can get that check-in and so, but nine times out of ten, we do in person, cause it's the preferred way to do it. It's a better way to do it. Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you so much.
Yeah.
We really appreciate your coming and
Absolutely.
And the work you're doing.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And if you need any, if you want any of my information for the teen court or case management, please let me know. And if you'd like to tour the club, we'd be more than happy to have you there, especially when the kids are there, that'll be fun.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is ditch board. Is there a motion to go into ditch board?
Move to go into ditch board, second?
It's a motion and a second. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Right? Motion carries, Travis.
We're in ditch board, we've got a FEMA letter and subrecipient agreement of the state, just need authorization to sign it.
Move to authorize Travis to sign the uh FEMA letter.
Okay. A motion and a second, any further discussion? And Carrie's already filled out our pre-award with assessment questionnaire. My only question is, the entity receiving the award for the first time from the state? Are we or aren't we, since we're only under like now, ditch board?
Did I check yes on that? I meant to check no because we have received from them before.
Under this title though? That was my only question, if that matters. I know the county's received. Since we've got to do.
That's right, last time it was, it was under the county, wasn't it?
Yeah, cause we've got to get our own UDI number.
Yeah, so I'll have to change that and reprint it, but. Yeah, so I'll have to change that and reprint it, but.
Any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. No, don't have anything else for ditch board. So entertain a motion to come out.
Move to matter ditch board.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. We're in regular session.
All right, um, so next on the agenda is Jim Peterson talking about Grover Million. Welcome.
Thank you. Been a long morning. Boys only guy.
I am on the advisory board, boys and girls club too, with Dan in the back. I think about first part of November, there's a ribbon cutting open house for all the work that's been done.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for your time. Just gonna walk you through. It's Jim Peterson with the chamber. Uh, talk about Grover Million, which is our capital campaign. Many have heard about, some of you have contributed here personally. We thank you for that. Some have. Impplied you will be contributing personally, so thank you for that upcoming pledge. So I'm just gonna walk you through, it shouldn't take too long. So the chamber, our mission, as you know, is serve the really area and businesses. So we have been reaching out, just so you're aware, more into Centerville, Wakanda area, trying to get some things restarted. Also from the farming side, we had that farm tour with Ree Jensen. I think some of you were there, which is great, trying to raise the awareness how big agriculture is. On eleven nineteen, we're gonna kick off a harvest fest, celebrate the harvest and some past farmers. So more information will be coming, but we wanna keep that awareness of the whole county, what's going on. So with that, our Zomian grow, it's rebranded. If you recall in the county, thank you very much, gave to. Million one, four million two and four million three. I'm just gonna walk you through this presentation. So on the second page, just some recent accomplishments. So if you look at, it's a capital campaign, we do it every five years. Probably gonna do another one in five years, six years. Uh, this time we waited six. So if you look at from nineteen to twenty four, the county actually grew nine point four percent. City grew a little over ten point seven. We know we're up a hundred and thirty five kids in the school district, so that's funding from the state. Bliss Point, when that started back in about fourteen, we had a hundred and twenty eight lots, bliss one and two. We have nineteen less as of this morning, we have fourteen. So it's done very well. We'll talk through that. Um, in that pamphlet I handed out, you can see some of the businesses that have come, business expansions that are in the works. You know, and that whole pamphlet goes by our key pillars, which I'll talk on a minute. One of the most recent ones, we were fortunate this year, we got a tourism grant to raise the visibility of Vermillion. May notice some new signs on the highways, other things like that we do. But the chamber's really one, we're separate from the city, as you know. We do the tourism side, we do economic development, then we do chamber, which is events, education, the businesses, et cetera. From childcare, we were fortunate this year as a community, we all came together and got a childcare grant and then our board gave a little additional money. So we're gonna have that celebration, if you wanna come to it on ten twenty two at C C's. We're gonna bring everybody together, recipients. Talk about we did, what we did, accomplished, do a ribbon cutting and then eventually the sites will have their own. If anybody lives by Bliss Point area, drives by Stanford Road, by the most trans- transformational one from the exterior. Has been Children's Center for Family. Right? Since ninety six, we got that parking lot, right? Twenty some years, got a, got it paved. Put a big sunny face outside, but each center we created capacity. So we increased fifty four slots in the last four months. We have twenty one more to go. We also did things from quality care affordability, you'll hear more about. And then we're going to our V C D C board, we have something we'll announce on twenty one, ten twenty two. To increase capacity even further for some of those in-home daycare. And we have a big thing on quality. So that was highlight, right, for workforce, getting more people with Boys and Girls Club that live here. So now we're gonna move on a little bit background. This was from Leanna had given me this a while back, so hopefully it's accurate from Kerry, just where the percentages of taxes go. So the county and tax dollars, it's about thirty two percent rounded. And it just scanned it. So if you go to the next page. Cause I did for those that attended and Pat part took in the legislative session and. Travis on Saturday, a lot was talked about growing the tax base, right? Things like that. Well, from the economic development or chamber side, if we look at bliss point one. And it's not there yet, but we should come off that TIF three or four years early. And that total tax base will be today about four hundred and eighty five thousand, of which thirty two percent will come back to the counter. Not yet, cause it's in that TIF. Bliss two, we estimate that'll be in that four twenty range. That's further out on their TIF, but right, we only have eighteen more lots. Uh, we're paying that tip off faster from the chamber, so that'll hit the tax base. If we just look at Erickson addition. Of these businesses, Runnings, Casey's, O'Reilly's, and then the National Music Museum. That is on that discretionary formula. I think those were all on that five year. Last year we got a hundred and eight thousand in taxes, so about thirty thousand came to your coffers. The big one coming up will be, and this is that discretionary formula over seven years. The Les Schwab Tire Company Dollar Tree, Les Schwab did open yesterday, Dollar Tree opens on Thursday. And the Masaba expansion, that's about a fifty million dollar base. They'll say about a half million dollars and that's over eight years. So you, we should start seeing some of that money next year. Then I didn't have on the sheet a week ago. Monday, city council, if you read the minutes, approve the project across from Ace, that's a fourteen million dollar project. Um, with that's the first time. City of Vermillion or probably within Clay County, it's a developer's TIF where money will go back to pay for some of the infrastructure to that developer. Um, we did a training for some other folks. I think Dave was there and Jeffrey with Morgan Thiller, the law firm out of Mitchell. They've done about thirty two in Mitchell. They've done about eighteen in Aberdeen. We've done one. So we are working now to raise the awareness on a developer TIF and it'll be staggered money in time. As of today, we have about forty million dollars worth of projects we are actively on, all reasonable. It may or may not come through, but that would help that grow that tax base. Questions? I'm just building up, then I'll ask you for something, you know that.
You feel like you're going somewhere, yeah.
But our capital campaign, right, we have Taylor Co. Core Trust. Veronica Schmidt Sanford, you know, who is from U S D Foundation, uh, four weeks ago, we did a public kickoff. We're a little less than halfway there. It'll probably run and will end in the first part of December, do a community celebration. Uh, Andy is on our committee, he's actually gonna be president of chamber in a couple of years. So if we go through, it's a one point five million capital campaign. The brochure shows you where we, actually I was a chair on the past one, co-chair with Baron Pratt. We raise about a little over two million. We know taxes are up, world's changed, some people are younger, more kids, so we just said one point five, based on our analysis was realistic. We're not using any outside consultants, anybody like that. So it's all internal. Our budget to do this campaign, the brochure and some other things kickoff shirts, about twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, that's it.
That might be worth mentioning too, the, the, the previously there have been some very substantial investments.
Previous campaign we were on, we use a consultant to validate some things and give some guidance to. You really add up all those costs for about a hundred. The second campaign, they retained an outside firm to come in and do asks of you or other people. In about a three day window, so it's very nice, gets it over with, but they paid about two hundred thousand to have that. So we thought, you know, we, we know you folks, it's our community. We may take a little longer, a little harder to get to, be stressed for about a twelve, fourteen week period, but we'll do it.
Yep, all the, all the board members have their.
All the board members are on the team, plus some community members and everybody asked five, six people and comes together.
I like that efficiency. I think that was a good idea.
So if you look at the pillars of that one point five, and then we have going through here, how we're gonna communicate back, did we reach the goals, would give feedback. Um, depending on the level you are, you can come into a strategy meeting, budget meetings. So the real goal, right, housing development solutions. Even in my former life, I was more like workforce, but if you really, since retired, took this job. It's really, we gotta get housing, right? Multi-family, single-family, over fifty five. Variety of housing, we've also applied for some grants to fix up owner occupied homes, but we haven't gotten there yet. So that's what we're trying to do. We've identified going east and north. Is the way to grow and we are actively looking for the land. Made some offers, didn't get it, but we know every lot who owns it. We go back through on infill lots and everything else. And we use that benchmark twenty twenty two housing study. We'll probably do another one in a year or two, so we can always benchmark if we apply for grants. They like to see we have that. Any questions, what we're trying to achieve housing? We're trying on that fifty five, gonna be really hard. I know somebody else is. So if we go workforce, that's really getting into right, grow the population. How do we keep kids graduating from a million high school? Here, how do we keep the right folks from university here? Most of the university, maybe we keep forty a year, they're either teachers or Sanford. A few more go to Masaba, but we have to educate everybody on those opportunities. Uh, then we wanna grow daycare options also, so then people can work. How do we just make awareness, there are career, career opportunities here, because my former life, people probably didn't know how many in the supply chain engineers, other jobs to support manufacturing. Masabi need not just welders or assembler. Same thing at Polaris. That's what we're trying to do. Next one gets into anomalies. Bless you. Thank you. And what can we do? Housing affordability, you know, is there certain things we can get in there? We have met with the transportation option, so it's gonna be regionally. Right? Our remaining transit now falls on their Yankton, which is gonna be rebranded Southeast Transportation. So we're looking at what, can they run a route or not? Trying to look at what better parks, recreational facilities can we do? And a lot of discussion on your fair, that's for another day, that's there or moved. Uh, but we've also looked at like trying to help the city with those pickleball courts that they wanna put down in Cotton Park and some tennis courts or other things for adults to do that we heard today, so they don't. You know, get a little mischievous, we can keep them active and things. So what are our metrics? You know, fairly simple, I know towards the last page, right? We wanna grow labor force. One and a half percent, one percent per year, and we can benchmark that. We'll have meetings. Twice a year, three times a year, give everybody feedback where we are, our initiatives paying out. We wanna grow the population one and a half percent per year. I think that's realistic. Uh, housing, we wanna get twenty plus single family homes. So between city and county, we've done that, but we need to do more per the housing study. Twenty plus multi-family beds per year. So if you look at that one last year, how many do we do? Now we can, we're working in its public knowledge with the university, other people on some bigger ones. You know, like maybe a forty fifty or skew it, but. This year we know we have nine in the works and hopefully another eight, so that's seventeen, but we need. You know, there's a need in our assessment about two to three hundred right now between the university and the community of multifamily. We're actively on quite of those or instrumental in the middle of most of them.
I think getting developers in. Build those can be challenging and I think one of the factors that I hear cited sometimes is our very high property tax rate. Makes it a little bit difficult for them to make the numbers work out per unit, especially when they're shopping around and looking at Mini Haha County and. Property tax levy is half what ours is, um, you know, so. I, in my mind, that is one of the very important roles that V C D C can, can play as a, as a nonprofit is, is helping to, to, to ease that and, and make our market a little bit more attractive. Cause I, I think we have a little bit of, uh, little bit of, of weight dragging us down that they're able to help, uh.
So we did a study of, you know, around, say our area, so Beardsford, Elk Point, Yankton, Mitchell. Brookings, what do they do on incentives for builders? We shared that with city council. Uh, we are offering and it's public an incentive on the two multi-family lots by the safety center. If we would get a builder to build, we are giving them an inducement. On both those lots to try to jumpstart and that's the best we can do. So it's like fifty thousand on one, thirty on the other. Money going back over two year period, trying to stimulate. Uh, and First Bank and Trust helped us. We've had one developer that they gave us to come down here from Sioux Falls. We've had a couple others look at the area. But we have to find the right land for the development, so it's cost effective for them. That's what we're trying to do. And then if we go into the childcare, we wanna get ten plus slots more per year to meet the need. Well, that's our overall objectives. So now where does that come to or led up to? And we know it's a five-year program, some start this year, some start next year. You're already through your budget cycle, you can start in twenty six. If you look at the past history and you're a great partner and we do give some money back for your Pictionary and things like that. But in the campaign is for history. Started in oh eight, you gave fifty thousand in the second campaign seventy five. Last time in nineteen, you pledged a hundred, world changed, so you gave significantly less than half of that because you just stopped, understandable. So what do we think? We've been asking most people for the same, because world changed, which would be a hundred. I'd like you to recoup a little bit, so maybe a hundred and thirty is the ask. Which recruits half of what you didn't pay last time. No budgets are tight, there's never a good time to ask, but I think we can structure it collectively together. To start it, right? Once your safety center is up, you're not moving prisoners, so, you know, maybe we just tailor it and start in. Twenty twenty six, you know, it's about twenty six thousand a year for the investment to help grow tax base, everything we're doing together. But it's your decision. We're great partners and like you see, say yes today or think about, we'll come back and say yeah. About questions, what we're trying to do. You know, we're also started a business meeting every January, we show transparency of all the finances of the chamber. This money goes in a bank account separate, we show where it goes, so.
I just have a question, it's. If you know anything or. Cause I'm obviously involved in the housing industry with Vermillion Housing, income based housing and. Our housing payment standards, which is what we're allowed to pay for assistance for our families. Um, I've been there over twenty years now and the first time this October, our payment standards in Clay County actually went down. Fair market rents in Clay County went down for the first time since I've been involved with twenty years. So we're gonna run into a problem now that. None of our people are gonna qualify for rents in town. And some of our barriers are, you know, the, the, the city. And there are all the regulations and stuff and the costs for landlords to constantly. Make all these changes to the properties that it's tough to recoup that cost and they can't. Meet our payment standards to wanna help our people, you know, because we have people that, you know, we wanna help, but we, we can't. Charge that. That amount of rent and even make, make our payments, you know.
Can you provide a, just a little bit more context, just as I'm not as familiar with it as you are, so the, so the fair market rent, that is then that's set by the federal agency that funds your office? Is that based on a market study here or where do they get that?
Every September, you can go online and look up fair market rents or every single county or metropolitan area in the United States. So you just go in, fair market rents, type in Clay County.
Yep.
And it'll tell you what our fair market rent is. And then as an office for Vermillion Housing, I have the ability in my office to set our payment standards, what we're allowed to pay. At ninety percent of that fair market rent to a hundred and ten percent of that fair market rent. We have always been at a hundred and ten percent of the fair market rent due to the cost of rents in Vermillion.
Yeah.
You know, it's always been a higher rent, so we've always, and even at a hundred and ten percent. We're not even close. So just to give you example. Last year. Our two-bedroom payment standard, and this includes all utilities, this is rent plus utilities. You, we cannot go over one thousand eighty dollars. So that's, that's, you know, we could, we could do that, you know?
Yep.
The rent, you know, could be.
And that's the one ten percent.
That's a hundred and ten percent.
Is one thousand eighty.
So now this year, starting November first. Our payment standard for two-bedroom is gonna be eight hundred and eighty dollars. That has to include utilities. So we're looking at a two-bedroom apartment. Our house or whatever is gonna be seven twenty five, seven fifty, where it's qualified for our program, which. That's not.
And those aren't out there.
So. You know. And you know, I, you had said that you, you have a grant for, you know, single family or private owners, you know. But I don't, I'm sure that's not. Yeah, we, I mean, and we didn't win a grant, Mitchell did, so we tailored ours after Mitchell's. Yeah, don't know why.
But it's.
Curious how and why it went down that far, not aware of it, so thanks for bringing it up, but it doesn't make sense with everything.
No, no, I was totally caught off guard when I, when I got my fair market rents.
You know, things we've done that maybe helped, like we had a. Developer in yesterday, one I know, you know, we changed that off-street parking, which helps build on smaller lots in town. People may not know that, but he went from having, everybody else has the, like a ratio we have now, one and a half for one bedroom, one per bedroom. Of formula. We did get for the Todd Polling product, Project Cross from Ace, why it got delayed, we had to count at least one stall of a garage, most count two, but at least we weren't counting garages before. But why does that matter? Cause then you need so much green space and I'm not against green space, but if you're gonna put concrete and parking that people may or may not use. So we changed that. So we changed that. Uh, there's a couple of things, we work closely with a couple of the new establishments in town, that they didn't have to put a sprinkler system in. We're a little, we are higher standards on sprinklers and some other things at other communities in our area. We spent a lot of money, Boys and Girls Club here, that we wouldn't have had, it's spent in Yankton, that's documented on things we had to do for the school. But I do believe there are some things on some of those standards where we're tighter here, for whatever reason. I would say the assumption is we want everybody safe, nobody's questioning safety, but we're, we're a little tighter on these, and it does discourage. At times, some investors or people coming in town to invest, because we have those standards, and taxes are higher.
And, and with private owners, you know, we have a lot of, it's, you know.
Rental property is a huge business in this town.
I mean, it's fifty plus percent are rentals in Vermillion.
Yep, and it's, you know, it's a struggle sometimes, because. You know, I understand, Vermillion, we want to be a clean, beautiful city, but we need all types. Of properties in town, we need the lower-income properties, we, you know. Might not be the most beautiful property, but somebody needs that house to have a roof over their head that they can afford.
And, and actual affordable house, not a three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar.
Exactly, and you know, all these, you know, you're coming in, you want to build all these local, local family housing, all these new projects and stuff. None of that stuff's gonna qualify for these people, you know, at this point, so.
Yeah, the thought is, maybe somebody moves up, and then we can take down there, or we thought, if you let, we went to our local builders. What's realistic for your workforce, so when we tried for those grants, didn't get, we thought installation, front door, rough siding, I mean, things that they could do.
No, we, we definitely need all that, I'm not saying we don't need that, but we also need, you know, the more. Properties, and, you know, how would you like to see some relief from the city, to, you know?
Let's, let's follow up, maybe not here, but have a conversation.
Having a little coffee and talking through the details on that.
Yeah, we, I would like to learn more and see what we can do, because we work with the city closely, and, and ask for a lot of changes that, when they make sense. We have to change with the time and meet our needs, so. So, thanks for listening, but hopefully I am asking to, you have a decision today, or when you, when you're prepared, and I know you're gonna have transition on your board, but I listened a lot. At the legislative session, a lot was on taxes or what we're doing, reached out to a couple, I thought it was appropriate time. To come now, you know, this campaign was done later in the year, the last ones are usually done in May, when you're in budget cycle, so I know your budget's probably set, I know we need to get your safety center. But would really like your commitment to be included, so we can, you know, showcase it, this year, you've contributed as a partner again, and stagger it that meets your financial needs out there in time.
Do, do others feel that they need more time to review the material, or are, are people comfortable?
I would like to have a discussion.
Have a discussion prior, that sounds good, alright.
So maybe put that on the agenda at the end of the month.
Yep, that sounds good, alright.
Come back.
We'll make a determination on a, on a pledge at the end of the month.
Yeah. Okay, and again, I'll follow up with you Dave, but if anybody has questions, or the brochures, you know, need more insight, for sure. I've given you a snapshot where we've gone, what have we done? Pretty much up, we have all our spending through July, the last campaign, where it went, everything's transparent, what initiatives we did make, or, you know, what goals we hit or didn't, so if anybody needs any additional information, let me know. Appreciate you considering, thank you for your time, appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Vouchers. There's a motion and a second to approve the vouchers, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, um, county properties in Wakanda, I guess, um, Linnea is, um. Out, out of town today, so maybe we can put that on the next, next agenda. Um, anything on Clay County Park?
I have nothing new.
Um, see, building projects?
Nope, nothing new.
Joint jurisdiction?
Had the meeting in, uh, a joint meeting with, uh, uh, City Hall, um. But, uh, really nothing new going on, we're, we're just, uh, gonna. Consolidate some things, and I think we're going to meet, uh. Early November next. I think that was the twelfth. We have another meeting scheduled, we're going to compile the comments and stuff, and, and, uh. Try to get the comprehensive plan ready for, um, for review to both planning commissions, and then come here.
Alright, great. Any other commissioner reports?
You were, you were at my Ollie class yesterday, any comments or questions or?
Yeah, it was a, it was a, a good presentation and an enthusiastic audience, and I think you had, uh, men- mentioned earlier, uh. You know, there was this issue about, um, cemeteries, and, uh, you know, the care of old cemeteries. And, um, you know, that might be something we want to talk to Tim Schreiner, who's the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission about, in general. They've been the most active on those things, and I, I know that between the commission and the historical society, there was a survey done some years ago. On, um, old cemeteries, so we now know where they are, there was a cemetery commission. Um, uh, at, at some point, but most members are no longer with us, so. We might want to think about, um, reactivating that, uh, there are two very knowledgeable members still. Um, on, on the board, but, you know, with just two of them, there hasn't been much, much that they can do, so. We might want to ask for an expression of interest. Of, uh, you know, who, uh.
I'm trying to remember, and maybe you remember Travis, but. I can go back and look in old minutes if I need to, but it seems to me like when we had that conversation about the cemetery board. Ten or so years ago, that, um, the commission kind of left it. With the Historic Preservation Commission, that they could. Appoint some board members. Um, I guess I can go back and look at minutes from back then, it just, if my memory serves me correctly, and ten years is a long time.
Yeah.
Normally, what they would do is find somebody, and then they'd just come and introduce them to us. So even the new board builders.
So we would consider the cemetery board as subcommittee of historical preservation, set the.
Yes, because they do get some money from us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I, I'd be glad to call Tim Schreiner and see what he knows about it too.
We'll see what, uh, she comes up with the, with the old minutes, but it, uh, yeah, it was one of those places where I. Uh, at the end of the meeting, a, a bad commissioner dick, you know, he, because Cindy, um. And, uh, Shaney had, had, uh, asked me twice before about, uh, the cemetery board thing, and I just. Didn't bubble to the top, so I didn't do anything about it, but, uh, uh, by the time she asked three times, I suppose I should get on the stick.
Um, any need for an executive session?
Did we, uh, find somebody to put a outlet in down here? Uh, Scott was gonna handle it, I talked to him.
Okay.
And I told him to talk to Andy and Lane, so they're in the loop on where the best spot for it's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so if there are. There's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. And Michael, if I can just talk to you for a minute before you go.